Aye.
Waters.
Yeah, right.
Waters.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
O'Kane.
Here.
Shaner.
Here.
We stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance, please. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands on a mission under God indivisible with the virginity and justice for all.
Yeah, that was adorable.
Good job, back row.
Yeah, no doubt.
Way down, girls.
Back row is holding it down.
That made my day.
We have a proclamation that reads, whereas the Arbor Day holiday was first observed in 1872 with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, an Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting, heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business areas and beautify our community with the source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council do hereby proclaim April 26, 2024 as Arbor Day in Sioux City and urge all our citizens to plant trees for the well-being of this and future generations. Present this to you, Kelly. Say a few words if you would.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just to let you know, Friday we will be doing another tree planting with one of the schools, doing the education portion of that. So if you have time, let me know and I'll let you know the exact details and times that we'll be doing that. Appreciate your support and thank you.
Mayor.
I think I've come back up. Friends from Mid-America come once a year to act like they're still part of our community.
Yeah, according to this envelope here, it's got Kelly's name on it.
There we go. Give it to them again this year.
Yeah, yeah. So, once again, I find myself giving this short little presentation exactly 18 inches away from the mayor's face. So, I look forward to this every year, Mayor. All right, good. So, I'm just here to deliver and present the check for the Mid-American Trees Please program. Sioux City's been a participant in this for years. And so, first and foremost, just a note of thanks for doing that. As a resident and also an employee of Mid-American Energy, I think it's great you guys are applying for these funds and doing great things with these funds. And all the things that you just said were all things that I was going to say, so I'm just going to cut it short and say thank you and congratulations. All right.
We appreciate it. Thank you. All right, thanks, guys.
And Mayor, if I can. I just wanted to take a note in recognition of Arbor Day as well and thank Kelly and Matt Salvatore. I had a phone call just to add to the generosity of Mid-American. Been working with a community member and Kelly and Matt were able to secure an idea. I'm going to run it past her. But she made a $5,000 donation in light of this Arbor Day and Earth Day that's going to be used to restore our canopies, our tree canopies throughout city parks. So I also wanted to recognize Rosie Cuny for her generosity. So, thank you.
Thank you. Tell her thank you.
I will.
Okay, Labor Day, guys, or Labor Memorial, I guess. Labor Day's later on in the year, yeah. Worker Memorial.
Worker Memorial.
Whereas, every year, tens of thousands of American workers are killed by workplace injuries and occupational disease. Whereas, tens of thousands more are permanently disabled and millions are injured or made ill. And whereas concerned Americans are determined to prevent these tragedies by observing Workers Memorial Day on April 26, 2023 as a day to remember these victims of workplace injuries and disease. Renewing our efforts to enforce the safety and health protections and redirecting ourselves to improving safety and health in every American workplace. Now therefore, I Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council do hereby proclaim April 26, 2024 as Workers Memorial Day in Sioux City, Iowa. Would you like to say it? We would appreciate it while the work is keeping workplaces safe.
Appreciate it. Every year we do do this. Last year we had 57 people pass away on the jobs. I'd like to invite everybody this Friday, April 26, before PM the SW Hall, where we'll be having a formal ceremony for it. You already let me know that. All right, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, who do I? I gotta... Oh, the Girls Inc. I don't have a... I got it for you, Karen. Come on up here. No, not Girls Inc. yet. I got Karen first. I'm sorry.
Sorry, Girls Inc.
You're next. Proclamation reads, whereas the strength of our nation on all its states and cities flows from the promise of individual equality and access to decent, safe and affordable housing is part of the American dream. And whereas April 24th is the 56th anniversary of the passage of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended, better known as the Fair Housing Act, which declares that discrimination in the sale, rental and financing of housing based on race, color, religion, sex, national origin, familiar status or disability is unlawful. And whereas shelter is a basic human need and the quality of human life is greatly diminished when people suffer discrimination because of irrelevant facts making it essential that America, the state of Iowa and the city of Sioux City, be dedicated to the policy that housing be available to all persons on the basis of equality and fairness. Now therefore, I Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council do hereby proclaim April 24th as Fair Housing Month in the city of Sioux City and urge all citizens to support and endorse the daily practice and policy of fair housing and reaffirm their commitment to fair housing opportunities for all. To that, the city, thank you for the work.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the City Council and really all the city staff for everything they do to help enforce fair housing rights in this community and to make the community a better and more equitable place for all people. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
We are here today from Girls Inc. We wanted you guys to hear our plastic project that we have been working on for about a month now. Really, it came about when I was driving around town and realizing all of the plastic in our trees and all over. And I just, I really thought it would be a great learning opportunity for my class. And so, we did a couple of projects and learned some new stuff that they are excited to share with you. So let's start with Amelia.
Could they use that other mic?
Yeah, do you want to come over?
Why don't you use the other mic?
Come over to this microphone, then we can see.
And you get us pull it down.
Yeah, pull it down to where they're speaking.
There you go.
That'd be wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay, so, single-use plastic is basically, like, plastic bottles that you only use once or, like, wrappers. And which, plastic bottles take 450 years to decompose. As long with plastic bags, they take two to 20 years. And with plastic wrappers. And plastic cut... 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 Takes 450 years as well. And plastic straws take 200 years.
Yeah. And why is it important to limit our single-use plastic?
Huge carbon footprint pollutes our oceans and kills marine animals and birds. Only a small percentage is recycled. Will still be.
All right, and now, a couple of girls will talk about what we did for our project. So first, what did we do, Jocelyn?
We made t-shirts and two usable totes. Limiting our single-use plastic intake. Limiting single-use helps our environment and our community. Creative way to help combat pollution.
And then, we went to the landfill tour.
We learned how landfills work and want they... They do to dispose of trash. They do not recycle. Items like plastic bottles, plastic straws, plastic colorie won't decompose for hundreds of years.
Excellent. And lastly.
Help to.
We did the...
Litter dash.
Yep.
To help to clean, cook, park, pick up garbage bags, to help produce. Protect wildlife in the area from swallowing, choking or. Ingesting. Polluting.
Pollution. Awesome job, ladies.
Job.
And that was our project. Yes.
Let's see your bag.
Can we?
And these are our bags that we made.
Oh, those are nice.
Yeah? You just need a pair of what, ladies?
Scissors.
Yep, and an old t-shirt, and then you got a tote.
Wonderful.
That's so cool.
May I ask that they come up here for a picture with us?
Of course. Yes, of course.
There comes Anne, yeah. I don't care. You guys want to come up here?
They can, we can sit behind them like this, too.
What's best, Anne?
They're going to take them with their pictures. They're going to take them. All right, get in here. Get over here, guys. Let Matthew and Julie get in, man. All right, thank you, guys.
Hey, girls. You want to grab this bag? I brought some t-shirts. I brought some t-shirts for you, so you can keep making some more. Yeah, of course.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're so cute.
I think we should just adjourn. Not going to get any better.
Yeah, no kidding.
We're going to end on a high point.
Items two through 13F constitute a consent agenda. Consider items passed unanimously unless separate roll call votes requested by a council member. You want to come to the podium as I read an item. If you want to discuss it, be sure and state your name and address to the record. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Two is reading of the April 15 City Council meetings. Three is a resolution amending the Position Classification Manual by approving and adopting an updated job description for the position of the city treasurer. Four is a resolution scheduling a hearing on the amendment of the annual budget. Five is a resolution approving a revitalized Iowa Sound Economy Grant Agreement for construction on Highway 75 North to support the Sualand Splash Water Park Development. Six is a resolution approving renewal option number two with HICAM for aluminum sulfate. Yes.
Just real quick, on that item, the resolution states it correctly. I just want to point out, because sometimes the media looks at our, the discussion and the RCAs, and the discussion reference 2324. And I just want to point out, it's May 16, '24 to ending May 15, 2025. Thank you.
Seven is appointments to boards, commissions and committees. A is a motion reappointing Willie Delft to the Building and Housing Code Board. B is a motion appointing Jody Wrightmeyer to the Events Facility and Tourism Advisory Board. Eight are actions adopting construction documents. A is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Pierce Water Street, Pierce Street Water Main Replacement Project. B is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Elk Creek Road Construction Project. I'd like to pull that item, because is this the one... I'm not for that roundabout. I know the rest of you are. But I think that's, there's places for roundabouts and that's just not one of them. And I think the citizens out there have spoken about that, but yet, we don't seem to want to listen to them.
Gordon Ferris, City Engineer. A lot of this came back from discussions with Mark Nara, the county engineer, and Dave Carney, Director of Public Works. This was prior to me being involved with the con. So, it doesn't, it does have a roundabout to be installed there. It is one of the best solutions for that five-way intersection.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'd...
A five-way intersection has 16 houses on it.
On the one street?
Yeah. There's very minimal traffic. You put roundabouts when you want to move a lot of traffic. You don't put it...
According to Mark Nara, the county engineer, he did get several complaints from that area, not being able to get out and wanted something to be done. Now, when we had our public meeting, no one came forward and said that this is what they wanted.
And I kind of, I tried looking into this as well and analyzing and crunching the numbers, because a lot of, a lot of the public, of what I heard, were very upset. Not just about the change is difficult and, you know, navigating a roundabout can be challenging if you're not used to that type of traffic movement. But I think they also were very worried about the cost and heard, you know, the price tag of $1.7 million and that that was going to be used for the installation of a roundabout. And so, I really tried doing my due diligence of talking with Public Works, Mark, as well as Gordon, and just analyzing what that cost was. And the truth is, it's significantly less. It's only a portion of that is the actual roundabout. It's more the street improvements and everything else. And so, if we would, I want to make sure that we are being as proactive as possible, because I would anticipate with the paving of that road, you're going to have a great deal more traffic that is either going to have you installing a traffic signal at some point in time or something to alleviate that concern now, which would be a roundabout. And I think, everything I'm reading, roundabouts are the safest mechanism for that. And then, actually, I thought it'd be cost savings compared to a lighted intersection, trying to navigate.
You would never have enough traffic to have a lighted intersection ever on that corner. Back when Lakeport used to come up there, if you were, you're too young to remember, but that's how people used to come into town. That was how you got to Lakeport. It wasn't down below where it is now. You came there and went the other way. And we never had that kind of traffic. And you don't have that kind of traffic now, because everybody goes on the new Lakeport. You're never going to have enough. This, and you're right, it's not significantly different in the dollars, but it is different. The million seven is the whole project. I get that. But that, a regular intersection and a roundabout probably does add, what's it add? A couple hundred thousand?
I think it was like one...
Hundred and thirty thousand?
Yeah, one thirty.
In that neighborhood. It was, I thought it was actually closer to fifty.
Got to be more.
I think it was one thirty.
No, it's just the amount of the concrete. That's all it was. It's, because we're going to redo the whole intersection.
That's fine. I'm going to vote no, then I'll feel better about it. So I think, we have public hearings, and I didn't read or hear of anybody that was for this. But yet, we have public hearings and then 45 people or whatever come out opposed to it.
Most of the people that were opposed during the first public meeting was because of the lack of access to their homes during construction. That was it. And we've solved that problem. And they all have access during.
At an additional cost.
Well, would I, yeah, because I heard everyone was mad about the one point seven.
Absolutely, it's an additional cost.
Yeah, no, I'm not arguing with that. It's, I'm just saying, it's, there was a cost. We had to remove a couple of extra trees and get a easement from one other property owner. Temporary easement.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
No. C is a resolution adopting construction documents for the Les Hill Scenic Trail Project. Nine are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a contract to Sioux City Engineering for the Perry Lane Reconstruction Project. B is a resolution approving Amendment Number One to the agreement and pictometry, with pictometry international. C is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to First Class Security for Skywalk Security Services. I should have asked you this earlier, Tiffany. Why do we take bids when we're not really, when we're not really looking at the bids?
Tiffany Claiborne, our Parking and Skywalk Supervisor. We did look at the bids, but we did it as an RFP. So we were able to look at all of the pieces to it. And just in the last several years, First Class has done a phenomenal job. They're available 24 hours a day.
Get it? I get all that, but people cost money to put even, you can say it's an RFP, but it's a bid. And people spend money to put those things together. And when we know we're not going to take them, I don't know why, we just don't negotiate.
And honestly, I don't, I can't say that we were, we came into it knowing that we were going to choose them, but looking at everything, they were... I mean, everybody on the committee decided for them.
I think we all knew they were going to get it before we even asked for the RFP, is what I'm saying.
Didn't we solicit eight people to, I mean, eight different companies?
We did, and we only...
You never know.
Yeah, and we only got three back, so.
I get that, but these guys were by far not the lowest. That's all I'm saying.
No, they were right in the middle. Yeah.
I was going to say, it was only...
Right, it was, the lowest was 344, 489. First Class was 369, 096. And Night Patrol was 405,006.
So it was like 20,000 or something?
Like somebody saying, doesn't cost more for a roundabout. It does cost more.
It does, absolutely. And two out of the three were Sioux City businesses, so, yeah.
We get what we pay for, I guess, and I think.
Well, then, don't take bids. Negotiate then, because that's what we're doing here. That's what, that's all we're doing, is negotiating. D1 is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with JEO Consulting for the New Riverfront Well Project. D2 is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with JEO Consulting for the rehabilitation of the Old Bacon Creek Sanitary Sewer Project. E is a resolution approving change order number seven to the contract with Vector Construction for the Martin Building Basement and Subbasement Repairs.
I need to abstain on that item. Conflict of interest.
F is a resolution approving a First Amendment to Development Agreement with Road Machinery and Supplies for Property at 5700 Alhane Strive. Items 10A and B are resolutions approving partial settlements of claims and authorizing payments. 11 are actions relating to property. A is a resolution authorizing the proving of a corrective city deed property adjacent to 1211 West 5th Street. Petitioners Isabella Square Development. B is a resolution proposing to sell property adjacent to 1825 South Oleander Street. The petitioners, Richard and Jenny Hodges. Application, 12 are applications for beer and liquor license. We need a motion to delete agenda item 12A to 2A regarding popping bottles and brushes. I'll move that. Second.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Water.
Aye.
13 are boards, commissions and committees. That concludes the consent agenda. No one want to be heard on any of those items.
You show me as an abstention to on 12A, 3A, please.
Passes 5, 014 is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the utility lining project. I'll move that. Second. Public hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5, 015 is a resolution scheduling a new bid opening date for the utility lining project. I'll move that. Second. Passes 5, 016 is a hearing resolution approving plans and specs for the Lion Park Improvement Project. I'll move that. Second. Public hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5, 017 is a hearing and resolution adopting an amended and restated urban renewal plan for the Teton Urban Renewal Project Area. I'll move that. Second. Public hearing's now open. I would just say that I think we need to review how we do these, number one. When it's in the journal and the council doesn't even know what the project is, there's something wrong with that, number one. Number two, when you put the dollar amount in, your ability to, before you even have an agreement, your ability to negotiate with a developer seems to me to go downhill real fast. So I don't know how you change that. I know you've got to comply with the law. But this way is not, not the way to do it, in my opinion. Hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. 4 to 1, Mr. Moore abstains. Or 4 to 0, I'm sorry. 18 is a hearing resolution adopting an amended and restated urban renewal plan for the combined Central Sioux City CBD Urban Renewal Project. All right, I'll move that. Public hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5, 019 is a hearing and resolution adopting amended and restated urban renewal plan for the amended Donner Park Urban Renewal Project Area. I'll move that. Second. Public hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard. Hearing's now closed. Passes 5, 020 is a hearing and resolution adopting amended and restated urban renewal plan for the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Project Area. I'll move that. Second. The public hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5, 021 is a resolution approving advances of fund for the repayment from the city's urban renewal tax, sick or revenue funds, and directing the filing of the certification. I'll move that. Second.
I'm sorry. I apologize, Heidi. Yeah, no kidding. There's deepened thought there for that one.
Passes 4, 01, Mr. Moore abstains. 22 is a resolution declaring official intent to issue debt to reimburse the city for expenditures and specified projects. I'll move that. Second. Passes 5, 023 is a resolution scheduling a meeting on the authorization of the issuance of general obligation renewal, urban renewal bonds or capital, or capital loans. I'll move that. Second. Passes 5, 02. That concludes the regular agenda. Passes five zero. That concludes the regular agenda. Are there any citizens to be heard? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, Mr. O'Kane. Okay, Julie.
It's Earth Day. I think we all know this. Uh, we had a great start with our Litter Dash last week and announcement of being more attentive to our own garbage containers and dumpsters in the downtown and business areas. So I want to continue Earth Day through the rest of the year. We just need to be more conscious, uh, about garbage, litter, plastic bags blowing, could be leaps, it could be anything that's jamming things up that are making our city look worse than it should. To get bigger, we've got to get better first. So I really strongly hope that everybody gets behind that, and we do a really good job and work together with cleaning up.
Okay.
I would just echo Julie's comments. I want to thank those that, um, were able to participate in Litter Dash. I think that that's always such an important event in our community. A chance to just really reflect, and I would, I just hope everyone knows how much I appreciate their willingness to take time out of their day to step up and, and really do that effort for the community. As Julie mentioned, I would also just hope that we take that moment to reflect every day, and whenever we're going outside and we see litter, or we see something on the trash that we don't just, or see something on the ground, that we don't just step over it, but we take an opportunity to leave things a little cleaner than we found them. I know that, look, I can't pick it up, and that bugs the heck out of me when I'm strolling through our parks, um, and just being able to see those things. So I would ask if you can just take a second, um, try to pick it up and, and leave it a little bit better than you found it. I know our Parks Crew and those visiting and all kinds of stuff would greatly appreciate it. I think we all just need to work together to, to be cleaner and greener. As I said, um, we were talking about the, um, recycling dumpsters downstairs, or downtown. And so I would urge everyone to use those and see where they can reduce single-use plastics wherever you can, whether it's in the grocery store or your beverage options. Um, but it's just something important to think about as we recognize Earth Day. The second thing I wanted to mention was just that it was a whirlwind, um, of a trip and a long time gone. I was out of town for, um, an alumni conference for my job at Morningside, but then also was able to travel out with the Chamber um, to discuss with our legislation, some of our most urgent needs and things that, that this council recognizes or challenges before us. And so I appreciated the opportunity to be out there and represent the city and the city council. I thought we had some good discussions. Um, some of the highlights for all of you to know, um, some of the different things that we were discussing. First and foremost is the one eighty-fifth. Um, the establishment of that runway, bolstering of that effort, um, are something that's paramount to this community, to be able to retain the one eighty-fifth and really grow that runway and that presence, so that we can have the KC forty-six, I believe, is the, the aircraft, if I remember right. Um, but there are good signs. We've been awarded, I forget if it was between twenty and, or I think between twenty and thirty million dollars in the design of that. And so good things are moving forward. We just got to make sure that once, once that comes available, that we will steam ahead, do everything that we can to be able to get the funding and really get that across the finish line, because being able to do that will really solidify, um, the one eighty-fifth in our community and its continuing, continued mission um, of refueling planes all across this globe. So that was number one. Um, number two, I would say really was infrastructure. Uh, we're focusing on a couple different things with infrastructure. The Hooven Valley, uh, is, has four very large structures that are all nearing a hundred years old. And so when we're talking about the Gordon Drive Viaduct, we're talking the Bacon Creek Channel, we're talking the conduit, um, all of those different things that really need addressing and are in desperate need of repair or replacement. But they all come with a very large price tag. Oh, and I guess the fourth to mention would be the storm water underneath the, um, underneath the channel. Those would be the four topics. But yeah, I mean, we've been lucky that FEMA is stepping up to really do, do some good help and help us with the project, at least with the storms who are under the channel. But we need to do a lot more to be able to replace. I had talked a lot about how the channel was a failed WIPA project. It was actually federal dollars that put that failed flood mitigation channel in place, and now it's, it's never really worked. And so we're looking for opportunities to beautify that area and repurpose it. And so I'm looking forward to those conversations, but also then anything that would be significant, such as the bipartisan infrastructure bill, or any ARPA funds that would be available or extended to Iowa. We would hope that our delegation will be supportive of directing those to Sioux City, because you know, I, heaven forbid we ever have a flood situation here again, but you know, that a lot of dollars went to Cedar Rapids in the complete rebuilding of their wastewater treatment facility in light of that flood. And so that's something they never had to bear. Um, and so that's something where we are having, foot the bill on a lot of these things and really leaning on our federal delegation to look at offsetting that, whether it's with grants or otherwise. We talked a lot about wastewater, or not a lot, but we, we definitely emphasized to them the importance of our wastewater treatment plant and any funding mechanisms that they may know about, whether it's through the EPA or otherwise, because as was emphasized by Mr. McGowan and, and all those that were out there on behalf of wastewater is that, look, when you're producing this much food, feeding that entire world, you know, food security is national security, and we need to do everything we can to remain operational. And unfortunately, those food industries take a tremendous toll on our wastewater treatment plant. And so we need to continue to support those entities and, and continue to provide food for the entire globe. The last thing as far as infrastructure was, uh, just down, looking at South Bridge, um, that industrial park, focusing on that interchange and updating them on where we are with that extension, that interchange down there off of I twenty-nine. But then also the, the drainage ditch out there to improve and expand our industrial park, I think are going to be critical moving forward. So ask for a lot of support on those different issues. Marty had talked about, um, section eight vouchers with Senator Ernst, who introduced it in the Senate, as well as Congressman Finstra introduced it in the House. So appreciated Marty's efforts, um, joining me out there and advocating on our behalf, as well as all the rest that were able to join and really push different initiatives. I also wanted to mention that our delegation, um, look, things were a little wild out in DC while we were there, because there was an impeachment hearing in the Senate, and so unfortunately, a lot of the senators were tied up during the time we were going to visit with them. Um, but I'm happy to report that Senator Ernst and Senator Grassley all rescheduled their, their events, so that they could make a point um, of whenever we were available, that they would be there and not miss a, oh, but still be able to speak with our delegation, and Congressman Finstra, same. So I really appreciated them, because I know some of the other states were saying that they were a little disappointed that they weren't able to visit with their senators. So I was thankful that ours showed up. I think that's all I have. It's been a, it's been a wild week, and it's good to get back, and I'm excited to get to work. So thank you.
Dan? One additional comment on, uh, Earth Day, as I learned this morning, that another important player in the mix is the Food Bank. And the, uh, num, the, uh, pounds of food that do not go into the landfill, because the Food Bank will collect those items. They were very complimentary of the retail stores in Sioux City that gives significantly to those items that need to come off the shelf, but they're still safe, they can still be eaten, and they make sure they get to the families that need the food, that are experiencing food insecurity. But that was a real eye-opener. I didn't consider, I didn't know that Food Bank, um, was that of an important player as well. So I just wanted to point that out to the public, so that they know. And, and they also offered, anytime you want to take a tour of the Food Bank and what they do, and how successful they are in fighting food insecurity, um, please do so. That's all I have, Mayor.
I just have one thing. Most of you know Pete Zandman from, from being instrumental in redoing Hubbard Park. But today, Chris McGowan and I drove up West Nineth, or what, Nineteenth Street above the shopping, above Baumgarzer, which, as you know, is one of the trashiest areas of this community. Drive there tonight, and you'll see the orange bags, and it's like, we needed to give him a shout out, because it's three to four times a year, he himself, by himself, cleans that area. And he was out cleaning it today with, with about the fourth bag, I think, of garbage. So if you see Pete, because it's, it's kind of in tune with this, but he's the guy that's taking that whole area on himself, all by himself, two or three times at least a year that I know of, and cleans it. And, and we should be thankful for people like that. But if you see him, it'd be nice to tell him thanks, just personally. So. I move we adjourn. Second.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye. Okay.